... Mayor Larry Bates and his passing today, so. Go ahead Scott.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored, Mr. Bates with a moment of silence. All right, approval of agenda, councilors may add or delete items as needed, I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion that you approve it as disseminated.
Got a motion, have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, introduction of special guests, we have one of our local residents, Mr. Chris Smallman, sitting back here, anyway, Chris, I'll allow you, whenever we get up to the ordinance, before we start talking about that, we've got an ordinance in place for him, we've had some issues with some on-street parking and we don't have really anything established in our rules and regulations about that, so I asked Mr. Smallman to be my guest tonight in preparation with this ordinance and all that, so Chris, welcome, do we have, oh, I do have somebody to announce back there, Mr. Ryan Ray, he's our new officer, Ryan, if you would, stand up, glad to have you on board, got to meet you today, fine officer and looking forward to lots of years of work over here in Madison County for us, or for you, anyway, that is. Who else we got, anybody else? Special guest there next to Jennifer, or you just here for?
I'm a resident.
Uh?
I'm a resident.
Oh, you're a resident, okay, all right, my apologies for not getting your name earlier, but anyway, welcome, if it's your first meeting, and let's go ahead and move on into special order of business, we have done, approval of August 11th meeting. Got a motion? Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. All right, public comments, anybody got anything you need to get up and talk about? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right on into city department reports, Chief Herring, what do you got for us on police department?
I don't have a whole lot, I just wanted to let everybody know on the numbers that I put out there, that you see a little gap in the SRO's numbers, I tried to put it on there, basically the gap is because they went to patrol when school was out, now they're back in full force in school, so you'll start seeing their numbers, and then also, you have animal control number, animal control number is rolled into the patrol numbers, so you'll see a line where it says animal calls, and I think it's ordinance. That's a lot. One form just animal control. I'll get you guys an animal control.
You're submitting it that way, or is he submitting it? Has he submitted a report?
Did he, yes, he submitted the report, but I wanted to get numbers that's specific for them, all on the same sheet, so.
And we have, which I'll talk about here later, but we've got a new partnership on that, and I asked Mr. Pierce if he would, basically do the reports that they want to submit as well, and I don't think much of it's going to change, matter of fact, it may simplify the reporting that we do. That's something else I'm just going to talk to you about tomorrow, too. Okay, good, good. Is that it? Any questions? Go ahead.
If I may, I was just going to say, I was able to witness a couple of.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Public works, what do you got, Brian?
We've replaced a 100 or two, one call on Hillside, we pulled red dirt through the bathrooms at the splash pad. Check the home room. Blue coverts behind the pantry. All her now. Brush hogging and weeding, main thing about it. I do have a question, very freshly called today. Table. For like his little park over here, which I do have a picnic table.
I don't have a problem with it. We're earmarking it for down here, so I don't have any issues with it. Yeah. Now Terry, just so you know, we're on a ever-two-year, is it two or three-year cycle now for the playground? Yeah, we'll have to finish out this one, so what we're planning on doing over there at your park at some point in time is putting in some, maybe potentially, a play area for the kids over there, but we're on a two-year cycle as far as the grants go, but I don't have any problem with the picnic table, especially if we, is it over here in the shop? Yeah, I think I've looked at it once before, but yeah, I'm fine with that, if we want to put something over there. Anybody have any opposition to that? Might as well get some use out of it, so yeah, that'd be more than all right, to go ahead and do that. Absolutely. Put it to work. Anybody have any questions or comments?
About parks, is there anything you can do about, there is a light down here at this park down here, but it doesn't work.
Which, which park?
Down here at the, where the footbridge is across.
Oh, okay, okay.
That light don't work.
Town Commons, yeah.
And it seems to be a quality bit of foot traffic, that little bridge has some trip hazards on each end, I hate somebody fall down and skin themselves and want to see.
Yeah, so we can take that under advisement, Brian, can we maybe get together tomorrow and go look at that? Made that note, sir, thank you for that. All right, any other questions or comments for Brian before we move on? All right, water department, report.
I don't have anything to add, should have been submitted, but if you got any questions on that.
I thank you for showing up. Appreciate that.
I hold the seat.
I noticed that whenever he's gone, he just kind of rotates, so apparently you must be on the list this week, so yeah.
The other option's with it.
All right. Any questions or comments of Mr. Rudolph, as far as the water department goes? Ty, you'll be happy to know, Jamie and I, and two young men, worked diligently to move a bunch of our stuff out yesterday, so. Now, we haven't moved it very far, but at the same time, we did get some that moved, so yeah. All right, Chief Shin.
Hi there, those of you that don't know, he went and he passed his level three.
Fantastic.
For his orders, so it's a very good achievement for the city.
That away, Ty.
Good deal.
That away. Thank you for that, guy. All right, fire department.
A couple of things we probably ought to address, continuing to have the problem with motor vehicle accidents from mom paws all the way up to Walmart and 412, as we noticed this last month, we continue to have them out there, straightest stretches we've got, and we continue to have accidents out there, so I'm not sure where we are with DOT or with Arkansas Department of Highway, but it's a problem still. Think many of you knew we had the fire outside of town at the Stroud Farm out there, just want to continue to show our appreciation to our surrounding departments, anything outside of town, we depend upon their tankers to come assist. Problem with dispatch, continue to work on that, Greg Wheeler is the, D E M B's also the fire service coordinator for the county, so he's trying to work with dispatch, trying to fix some of the problems, one of the big problems is that when we have structured fires, we have what's called a box alarm, which means that they should be paging certain departments to respond to those fires with us, other day, they only paged one department, they didn't have drivers available at the time it went in, we had to go back in later on and get the other ones, by the time they got paged, then we ended up with Whittor Aurora, Bohana Mountain, Smyrna, and Japton, which gave us plenty of water for the structure, which was a large structure, but without that water supply, anything outside of town, we're facing problems, that's just one of the issues we deal with, so hopefully he's going to get that resolved, and we'll see how we go on that.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
I guess I'm not understanding, so there seems to be a hiccup?
I think it falls into the dispatcher, who is on at dispatch, some of the more experienced dispatchers will remember to page for departments, but it's kind of hit or miss sometimes as to who does what, so we're hoping that it's moved forward, there's some plans to do some things with dispatch, once the counties no longer have to use all the EMS money for law enforcement, so we're hoping to get them better trained, you know, the dispatching job is one, probably the most difficult job in the county, whether it's for us, for our law enforcement partners, that's a difficult job, they don't get paid that much, and there's not that, they don't get a lot of training on things they need to do, which part of what we're going to talk about in ISO here in a minute, but that needs to be fixed.
We did have a conversation. Fire and, you know, we've been on the county for dispatch.
Worried about is our ability for those medical calls and emergency medical calls and things, it's one thing, have fire, and I'm not saying that one thing's more important than the other, but at the same time, I told Greg that we're open, or would be willing to help in any form or fashion, whether it be financially or whatever, to get dispatching up to where it needs to be in regards to that, so.
We did have that conversation with Greg in my office, and I don't know if you knew that or not, but I had that conversation last week with him.
He'd been talking about, I mean, you've got good people, it's just getting them the training, and I'm sure it has to do with budgets and everything else on there, it's just, it's one of those issues, and us and law enforcement, we're out on islands when, I mean, our contact is back to dispatch, and so if we're, if it's not following through, it becomes issues, so.
I find it an issue, it was really disturbing when I read your note that said that they did refuse to dispatch when the school, even though it was a false alarm, they still didn't dispatch it, they clearly said they refused to do it.
No, that was on the, on the other medical calls.
On the other one, right.
It wasn't refusing, they just didn't dispatch us.
So, that's disturbing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why my question was geared more towards protocols, like are there not set protocols and training in place, and why would that not be a priority, I guess was kind of what I was wondering.
It's been an ongoing issue for years, and of course, as the mayor pointed out, we're dependent upon the county for those services, and.
We can't even get, take care of the kids, that's a problem. And these are some of the concerns that we've talked about, and Chief Herring and myself have discussed this as well, and what we continue to do is document, and as problems come up, we send them up to the county and make them aware of these problems, seems to get better for a little while. Oh, and then maybe they've lost hands, or something has happened, and, but we're going to have to be better at some point in time, and we're going to have to, and that's why I offered to Greg the other day, I said, hey, look, if there's anything that the city can be doing, as far as even financial support, or whatever we need to be doing, I said, let me give you an olive branch, paraphrasing, but I said, we're here to help, we need it to be better than what it is, so.
It would be, very appreciated.
I'll remind everybody that we depend on them to the tune of $35,000 a year for our police dispatching right now after hours, so. Yeah.
In addition to that, mayor and I met with the ISO representatives a couple of weeks ago, and I think it was a really good meeting, I think mayor got a chance to kind of see some of the things we're dealing with, the issue that I had been concerned about, in our last rating, when we went to a class three, our overall score was a 72.57, 70 is the cutoff for a class three, so if we drop below that, then we go back to a class four. We know that in, they're trying to do these evaluations every five years now, so the next one we are scheduled for should be 2028, unless we decide to do it earlier, because we think we can move up. When the new ratings came out, there were several things we're concerned, one was the loss of our training tower out at the station two because of the tornado and the damage was done there, also, the new standards, NFPA standards, the burn facility we have out at Smyrna, we would have to do some upgrades, you've got to have all-weather, there's a variety of things out there, there's not a hydrant, so losing our training facility is a significant blow to us, that in of itself would knock us below the 70 mark. We also know that in the future, if we got rated again, we would need a ladder truck, so we would lose a significant number of the points from the ladder truck if we got rated again. We did find out that there are some improvements with the water system, in which we think we pick up some of the points we would lose for the ladder truck, as we were talking about it, so the two main areas that, in addition to ladder truck, matter of fact, the more points available, on the 100-point scale, fire department, we cover, there are 55 available points for us on there, five points are extra credit, and we get those in there, so we got, of the 100 points, we ended up with 38.24 last time, water had 28 points, dispatch only gets 66%, there's some issues that goes there, I think they're going to address going in there. In order to improve, the, getting the training facility back and running is a priority, because you get graded on your facilities, having the tower, having the burn facility, a variety of those things, we also have to have so many hours, our, each of our firefighters has to have 18 hours a year in the live fire, they have to be in there going through the training in there, so we lose those points, so that's a biggie, and that's nine points out of the 50 points that we're actually held accountable for. And then the company personnel, and company personnel are for any of our firefighters who have a scheduled time when they're at the station, so right now, we've got Magordi and Dyson, who are on shift Tuesday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:00, and Monday from 7:30 to 4:00, we worked that around the school schedule, was why we had that in the first place, so those two gentlemen are, they have set schedules, we talked about it before, about perhaps having some overnight help, doing some kind of page shifts, where we could have people there, but that is a possible of 15 points out of our 50 points, last time we got just over four points for that, so those are our areas, primarily if we're wanting to try to get growth and continue to stay where we're at, and at some point get to the class two, so I think the mayor's going to address the other conversation we had regarding training in his remarks, anyway, so that's kind of where we are right now with those different areas, we do get credit because our Smyrna and Whittor Aurora have been really good about training with us, and they have, we have to do quarterly training with our automatic aid departments and document that, so they've been doing a good job with that, and we're really proud of the progress and work that they're making there. So, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a question about one of the bullets, the cut to FEMA's budget, which could potentially impact the person.
Yep.
Do we, do you have any numbers over the last five or six years, how much we have utilized from, as far as grants from FEMA's programs?
The, last one we had, we bought air pack, or we bought new turnouts, I think that was 10 years ago, and we bought all turnouts at the time, and that was several hundred thousand dollars, because we replaced everybody's turnouts, it was 2015, I believe, was when we went in there, since then, we've been piecemealing, you know, we included it in our regular budget, but that was time when we were able to upgrade, we have had money, the monies that we get for some of these other things, like the grant we got for the new fire engine way back, that money came from that budget, any money that comes through to the U.S. Fire Association, any of those kind of grants, which then trickle down into these others, that came out of the FEMA budget, and so right now, we have a grant request in for new air packs, because all of our air packs are now outside of the NFPA guidelines, but we don't know if that money is going to be returned, or it's going to be there or not, so we're waiting to see, Tina Cole is the lady that represents that, so she came in, has to fill out the paperwork, so we're good with the paperwork, it just depends on whether that money shows back up in the federal budget.
Comments? All right, hearing none, moving on.
So, there's a new law that's going to go into effect, we have to change our web, our emails to .gov, me and Brandy worked on it, and we've already got everything changed with preferred, so we are all live with .gov as our emails, and then also, we are live on the credit cards, we haven't taken one yet, but we can take one anytime, we also transferred the industrial park money, the 355,000 into general fund, and then Sunday, I leave to go to Little Rock for training all week, so. I think it's already, I mean, I think they've set it up to where it can go to both, but I don't know how long that's going to be.
But I will say this. It bounced back because I'd used one of our email addresses, .org, and it bounced back and said sundeliverable because it wasn't .gov, so, as you're sending emails, make sure that you're putting .gov, not sending and you're receiving emails.
Comments, that affect all of the department heads as well, do we need to have that?
You do have it.
I, if I have, I've never seen one.
Well, I think, don't I mainly send stuff to Gmail?
Yeah, I use Gmail.
Okay.
For everybody else, if we've already switched.
Okay.
I will say on the website, that has not changed yet, and we are now, because we're going to .gov, our current process of finding a new program, website is still going to be .org right now, but we'll change it.
You're still getting emails at .gov?
Maybe, but I don't have an .gov email that I'm aware of, I've always had my. I didn't even know I had it, so. Okay, okay.
Hearing.
Let me, let me.
I'll get with you, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
For these grants and stuff, if we're having to do that, I want to make sure I've got the, whatever, by the way, do we, have we got our grant money yet for the?
No, we have not got the grant money yet.
Waiting for a check for two weeks now, so, anyway, the governor did present us with the check.
Did you try to cash that? Did you take it down?
Ask her, what big bank can cash this check for me, and she said, ah-ha.
Did you explain the process that those don't go through?
Yeah, exactly, so, yeah, no, we haven't got it as of yet, should be any time, though, I told you that I've got that from Chelsea Weaver, she said it should be any time, we should get that money, hopefully this week. Any other questions or comments for Carmen? All right, hearing none. Mayor's report, again, Chris, thank you for showing up, we've got some good news for you with this ordinance that's coming up, and you're more than welcome to get up in my time and speak if you would like to, or whatever, but I do appreciate you coming, I appreciate your patience with this process, it's been, it's been a long time coming, and I think it's going to establish some protocol for the entire city, and we're pretty stick with fines on this thing, so that's how serious we're taking it, so I'll let you listen to that here in just a minute, so I do appreciate you being my guest tonight and coming. Arvest Grant Award, we got a $25,000, we had tried for Sprint, or not Sprint, T-Mobile, Sprint? T-Mobile, we tried for T-Mobile grant for use on the Bashing Building, we did not get that, so Brandy quickly turned around, and we asked Arvest Foundation for some grant, we met with Matt, for some grant money, we met with Matt Smith down here, and they agreed $5,000 in grant money. The other thing that we're working on, so big kudos to Arvest Foundation and what they're doing, but another thing that Brandy's trying to work on, you know, everybody, you know, this is a popular thing, the Bashing Building, so we're going to start asking those, some business owners in the community to help us out with that, because we're going to be just a bit shy of what we need as far as the match, we had budgeted $45,850, of which we have about $24,329 left, which gets us right there for a match, but still, we've got about $70,000 worth of upgrades that we're wanting to do, so this will get us further along than where we were, a big thing is the central air units, of such, over there at the Bashing Building to cool in the summertime and in the winter, if need be, so, so that's good news, and we certainly appreciate Arvest Foundation for what they've done for us, and have done for us in the past, too, we really appreciate them. SRO positions, just so you know, we formally, Josh and myself went down and, regarding SRO program, we're, we are putting our best foot forward as a city, we're offering them a third position, which would give us absolutely more coverage, and they seem very receptive, correct, Chief Herring? They seem very receptive to that idea, and we're going to offer that to them at 50% of the cost, instead of the 75, 25 split like it currently is, they're paying 75% of it, we're on the hook for about 25% of it, and we're also visiting with them, and kind of going over some numbers right now, as far as air stepping in the program, but we just feel, to give St. Paul the coverage that they need, we feel that this is important to us, and we need to put our best foot forward as a city, they had no complaints of our SRO program, they said we're doing a fantastic job over there, so really good conversation with the new superintendent as well, and the staff, so we're looking forward to seeing what they come up with, as far as that goes. Happy to announce that we've got a new cooperative with the Best Friends Animal Society, this is fantastic, and the fact that I know Pausing Clause has got a lot on their plate right now with what they're doing, and it's so nice not to have to depend on one entity to help us out, and as you know, strive to give as little amount as we possibly can throughout the year, and so we've been. So, again, we're just thankful to this new cooperative with Best Friends Animal Society, it could potentially be a cost-saving to us later on, so Officer Pierce is doing a fantastic job with that, he's willing to meet us with whatever we've changed kind of midstream on him as far as reporting goes, and he's willing to help with that. I'll talk about the interlocal agreement with the county here in just a minute, because I'm going to have to read it to you all, got, just FYI, I got back, and if you'll notice in the August 21st and August 28th newspapers, Madison County Record in the legal section there, there was a notice from FEMA, I've got a letter here from FEMA, that we are starting the 90-day public hearing or appeals process on our floodplain mapping system that we've adopted, so we're another step closer to that, so I've got that letter here and some information that I can make available to the public or to you all as council members, I just got this the other day, so it didn't get in your packet, but I've got it here, and we have no, really no objection as far as appeal goes, or anything of that nature at this point in time, liking what they're agreeing with us about in regards to that, so, anyway, got that, we are working on, and Sean's not here, but we're working on, and I have to personally thank Sean, in the fact that he's helped me out tremendously with this, and as well as Chief Herring, too, working on updates to personnel policies, which we'll be giving a report on in the very near future, giving it to you all, to the council for your blessing, our department heads have worked hard to come up with some perks or enticements to attract quality employees and make them stick around a little longer than what they have been in the past, so we're not only updating the policy, but we're hoping that we can entice those by offering more benefit than what we offer as far as our personnel policy goes. Update on the airport, we are finished with that, we're, the only thing that we're waiting on is a meter from Carroll Electric, and once they get that installed, we'll be able to go, we can close out that grant, and we still have lots. We still have lots of money out there, you know, we've been footing the bill this whole time. We've got lots of money now that, now that, I say we've got lots of money. Lots of grant money still left to come to us. Thousand of 640 or 50,000 dollars of grant money. So, that'll be coming back to our coffers here before too long. So, we're excited that we can finally see light at the end of the tunnel as far as the airport goes. Back to, back to Kevin's comment earlier about RDOT and kind of where we're at. Just so you know, Stacy Burge has received numerous letters and we appreciate everybody in the audience that have, has been following this. You know, as, as you know, I'm very passionate about the safety and the welfare of our citizens that drive on the bypass every day. And, and again, we go back to that, where we wrote a letter over a year ago and we finally just got a response to it this year. Obviously, there's been some near misses and some close to tragic events that have happened out there. But, good news is, is I know RDOT is hearing you. Got a phone call from Stacy Burge last week. They're wanting to maybe do a cooperative with the city to address the issues. The good news about that is that Brandy and I visited with Granted today, who can help us kind of facilitate some of the engineering and the professional aspects, the legal aspects of what we'd be looking at. That's gonna be kind of our offer, putting our, all of our cards out there on the table. That's gonna be our offer to RDOT, if we can get some grant funding to help us out with that. And we feel like we've, from what I understood today on the conversation, we have a really good shot at, at getting it. We just need to figure out if RDOT's gonna be the, the prime sponsor or if we're gonna be the prime sponsor. And it kind of changes the dynamic depending on how they, how they do that. So, we're working diligently to try to get some of those issues solved.
Good.
So, Brandy, thank you for setting that up with them. I'm glad we had that conversation with you. Lastly, we have an interlocal agreement. Jessica, for those of you in the audience who don't know, Jessica's our city attorney. Visited with Judge Garrett today in regards to this. He said that the, the Association of Arkansas Counties had made mention to him, talked to him today. We thought we could just execute this agreement. And he said, really, you want to do it by ordinance? So, we'll go ahead and get this part of it out of the way, make sure there's not any questions. But then we'll probably establish and, and do an ordinance next month.
Next month, yeah.
And, and the reason for that, the legality of it, is as long as, as long as Judge is Judge and I'm mayor, this agreement is standing.
It's down the road.
As soon as we, as soon as we leave office, it's not withstanding anymore. So, that makes sense to me. So, I told Judge Garrett, the contract, I'm gonna read it to you all in its entirety. This is in regards to Act 371 of 2025. And it's concerning recent changes made at the legislative, within the last legislative body. And, and I'll tell you kind of what, how this thing goes and kind of give you a backstory to this. Right now, a district court is, is funded almost, I would say, by 70, close to 80% by the city, right? Because we house it here, we do everything here. In a lot of other communities, and it's different, everything's a little different. But in other communities, the courts all see the same thing. They see tickets and things of that nature from the Sheriff's Department as well as the Police Department, right? So, typically what happens is, is the state, we remit back to the Administration of Justice Fund, to the state, we remit back 50% of the fees that we collect in, in this court. Of that, it, it changes the fees that, so, they get 50% of it, the county gets 50%, the other 50% and the city gets the other 50%.
The city tickets get the 50%.
City tickets get theirs, county gets theirs. Typically, the city is a little more as, as far as what we take in. And the county has, on average, only got about $2,291 a month.
For court costs.
For, for court costs.
For just court costs.
For just court costs, yeah. So, but, what the legislative branch of the government basically said with this act is, is, hey, we don't care who gets what, and I'm paraphrasing, we don't care who gets what, we want, we want 50%. Which, if, if you've done it the way that, that the, the way that it read, and help me out if I'm wrong about this, it means that, that the city would be taking less and, and the county would actually be getting more. Right now, as it stands, where we're at, we're footing 80% of the bill anyway, right? So, we discussed it, discussed it with Austin. And if, if this, if the county will allow for us, and so that's the agreement, if the county will allow for us to give them back only the $2,291, $2,300 we rounded up. $2,300 that we're currently doing, that means it's a windfall for the city to the tune of about $18,000 to $24,000 extra a year that we can add to the bottom line for, for, and there's certain things that we can use it for, certain things we can't use it for. But, it will help out with salaries that we cover in here right now. And, and let me, let me say this, the county's currently paying about $23,500 into the city for Pam's salary, half of Pam's salary. However, by doing it this way, they'll be paying, they'll still be paying the 23.5 and we'll just be adding an extra 24,000, roughly $18,000 to $24,000 to the bottom line every year. So, the agreement reads as, as following, and that's probably as clear as mud. So, if anybody needs any clarification on that, I'll be happy to discuss that after the meeting or, or during the meeting if there's any public comment out there. City of Huntsville will continue to collect all county and city court costs. With these court costs, the city will pay 50% of the court costs collected on violations committed outside the city limits, the county's, county charges, to the Administration of Justice Fund for deposit into the State Administration Justice Fund. The city will pay 50% of the court costs collected on violations committed inside the city, city charges, to the Administration of Justice Fund section for deposit into the State Administration of Justice Fund. These payments shall remit on or before the 15th day of each month of the monies collected in the district court matters during the previous month. That, that, in number, part two of this, is that the remaining money shall be distributed as follows. The city shall remit payment on or before the 15th day of the month, a total of $2,300 to the county. The city shall retain and keep all remaining court cost funds for both the city and county court costs, which shall go to the city's Administration of Justice Fund. This will help defray the cost of district court that the city encumbers each year. This agreement constitutes a final written expression of all terms of this agreement and complete exclusive statement of the, of those terms. Whereas this agreement is non-expiratory unless one party wishes to dissolve the agreement, all parties must be notified in writing 30 days prior to the dissolution of this agreement. This agreement will be reviewed annually to ensure that all information is current and correct. Any amendment to this agreement must be made in writing. And then, and then it's got a place for us to sign. Larry has agreed to this, Austin is the one that kind of brought it to our attention. But Larry has agreed to this, so it'll be an increase in funds that we receive ultimately from the county. The only thing that's really gonna change is we'll be more, more or less the clearing agency for the county and the city as far as the Department of.
Finance.
Yeah, Department of Finance goes. So, we'll actually become the clearinghouse for that, which, that, that is why we kind of need an agreement. So, they're, they know exactly that they're gonna be taking the exact same amount that they were and we're gonna be capturing the rest of it, which will add to our bottom line. So, that's exciting news and, and we'll obviously be presenting an ordinance next month to kind of put this into law. So, I'm gonna execute this contract, I'll sign it, send it up to the judge. The judge will go before the JP's, he'll, he'll visit with them about it. And then we'll establish ordinance as such, so. And I'll tell you, guys, to be fair, Judge Garrett has always championed the cause of putting more money into the district court. Sometime that, that's difficult to vis about since he's married to our chief court clerk, and I get that. But at the same time, it's one of those things that I'll say, that he's always been a proponent of that. Thing that I'll be completely transparent about, in, in Carroll County where they do this, it's three cities. You know, they've got Berryville, Eureka Springs, Green Forest. So, the amount that the county has to pay in is much, much smaller because it's split up between three cities, right? Here, we're the ones footing the bill on this and I want to make sure that we get our fair share or, or by law, what we need to get. So, it was one of two things, we either negotiate the agreement between the county and what we pay Carmen and increase that, you know, including fringe benefits and things of that nature, which would be to the tune of $7,000, $11,000. Or, we can do it this way and, and continue business on as usual and it adds money to the bottom line for the city, so. Only one payment a month has to swap hands. And that's, that's what this, this.
And also Travis, remember the law changed that we don't have to pay the judge's part of the.
Yes, and that goes into effect January 1st.
The state is gonna.
The state is gonna pick up the judge's part. So, if, if, if they keep collecting money like they have been in the court and that goes away in January, it could be a $32,000 to $35,000 windfall for the city time per year. So, anyway, I think that is it for me.
Were you gonna address our other meeting?
Oh, yes, yeah. Chief Shin and I had a conversation and so this will come up probably next month. Met with and had a good, long conversation about this. And I think for, for us as far as the city goes, this makes absolute total sense. And there's nothing that I have received in correspondence with this group, Kevin, that I'll tell you that I have thrown a red flag or anything of that nature. So, I'm really excited about this opportunity and what it does. It will help us budget everything that we need to budget in regards to seeing the training facility come to fruition a little quicker. More so, to Chief Herring, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to look at replacing some cars. And if we add another officer as SRO, we're gonna have to look at buying car. This is a perfect opportunity as far as this government, government capital group goes. Interest rates are fantastic and the financial terms are great. We can do five, seven, 10, 15, 20-year programs as far as financing goes. And then all we have to do is earmark instead of, for example, I'll, I'll use this for you. Fact that, you know, we had, we had $8,000,000 in the budget last year for a new automobile for the police department. That $44,000, that's just the capital expenditure. We just write it on the general fund and go pick up a car, right? This is a game changer for municipalities and I'm, I'm really tickled that Kevin brought to my attention in the fact that instead of that $44,000, let's say that it's $100,000 that we need because we're gonna need two new cars as far as replacing cars. Amatize that $100,000 over a seven-year period and actually reduce the amount of our budget expenditure by a significant amount by paying a monthly payment or a quarterly payment or a yearly payment, however we want to do it. And we own the vehicle at the end of it, it's not a lease-to-own deal. We've done a little bit of background check on this group and so far, so good as far as what I'm seeing as far as the financial aspect. Give you an idea, we talked about the $500,000 project for the training facility. We could do, and this, this rate has changed almost a half a percent since we checked in on this. Payment wouldn't start till July of next year. Interest rate at the time that this was quoted was 5.75%. Payment per year, $51,150.19. That's an annual payment of $51,000. So, Leslie, you, you've served on there, on our committee before. Remember, we earmarked about $50,000 for one, one category and $50,000 for another category. Overall, $100,000 that we were gonna put into the fire department, right? And this was gonna be a process that we were gonna save this money over a period of time until we could afford just to pay cash for it. Game changer for us in the fact that right now, currently, we have an opportunity with the $50,000 that we've earmarked to pay that thing off at, at, at now 5.38% interest over a 15-year timeframe. We're not, folks, we're not gonna get much better interest rate on that $750,000 that we've got sitting in a CD there. We're not gonna get much better interest rate than that at the bank. What it does is it gives us to buy now, gives us an opportunity to pay later and it gives us an opportunity that we're not hitting our budget. And I don't care if every one of you has suspended the budget process before. It's gonna be one of those things that once we get up to that point, and this is the one thing that I worry about, our, you know, $50,000 a year for the next five years, if, if we can pay something off, it's, it's, and we get in financial trouble later on down the road, that we have to kind of rob from Peter to pay Paul because our general fund is set up that way, where else are we gonna take it from what we've earmarked already? Write it into our budget and we know what that payment's going to be and we can defer that payment until a year from now. This is, this is a win-win for us. We can start these projects much sooner than having to save three or four years to get them back. Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we visited with this gentleman about interest rates and things of that nature. I don't anticipate, the training facility is gonna get us the most ISO points that we possibly can get right now.
I don't think it is either, but.
Battery's dead. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I've got one bar on my battery, but no big deal. But the, the thing that I will say is, is, what I was gonna say is, is like the interest that, you know, buddy who likes to, you know, personally buy things and not have payments on them, I mean, it's inevitable, we all have payments. The flip side is, is hey, what's that interest rate look like? You're exactly right, the, the, by the cost of inflation moving forward and us saving a three or four-year period of time to come up with half the money for the training facility, by that time, it's, everything's went up that much. So, it gives us an opportunity to look and buy now without breaking the bank and being able to finance for it. And it falls within the categories of financing right now as of this year, that we could actually look at doing something like that. I really kind of want to wait, and I've told Kevin this, I really want to wait until March to see where interest rates are in March, because you know, there's Fed chairmen's up in here. There's a lot of animosity between the Feds and the executive branch of government. And, you know, President Trump thinks that interest rates are lower right now and the Fed chairman's not agreed with that. So, there's some animosity there, telling you all anything that you all don't already know. At the same time, I got a feeling in March of next year, we're really gonna see a significant change in interest rates for the better. So, so, if we can, if we can look at maybe budgeting, we've already got the money earmarked. If we can look at budgeting, I say January, February, we need to come up with a game plan of how we're gonna do it for this training facility, get the most ISO points that we possibly can. And that's where, that's where we get up with the most points at. So, I'd say that we need to put that into effect at least by March and kind of see where we're at as far as interest rates go.
And ISO points are obviously very important to the city. Also, it's just the fact our folks get to start training, get to doing the things they need to do. Plus, Chief Herring and I have talked about it and Assistant Chief Shin talked about it. It's not just us using it, law enforcement would be using this as well for their training purposes and things. So, it's a, it's a facility we both can, will benefit from dramatically.
We've always lived by this old adage that with the, with the state government, whenever you finance something, you can only finance it for five years. Well, there's Act 65 and an Act 78 that I would not refer to. We would have figured that out just at some point. We, we can finance longer than five years. We can do things, you know, automobile, obviously, five years is about good. But if it's real estate purchases and things of that nature, especially with this government capital, which they only facilitate government-style funding. So, the interest rates are, are cut down, I mean, that's, that 0.75 is only, at the time that this was quoted, was only about a percent higher than, than prime. So, than, than what, than what's set forth by the federal government. So, my point to that is, is this, we use their money before. that is, is this, we use their money before we use our money, and I think it's going to be a game changer for us in all departments, not just Kevin's department, but I think it'll be a game changer for Joshua's department. Uh, Brian, we don't let you spend any money, so.
[laughing]
We depend on state funds on Brian's side of it. So, anyway, but I think it'd be a game changer for us. So, we're looking forward to that. Any questions, I mean. Hearing done. Moving on. Uh, next up, Economic Development Director, what do you got, Brandon?
Um, there's no questions on that report. I just wanted to let everybody know that our best presentation will be today. Uh, face available must be there.
Planning Director, I'm assuming that
Oh, did you include the report? I sure did.
Okay.
But I do have something to add, if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
On Saturday the 13th, which is this coming Saturday, our fall cleanup, I've kind of lost track of how many years it's been now. I think we skipped a year or two for COVID, so we're right around 10. Um, RVest is going to do breakfast for us. It's going to be a college street park. We have, um, reached out to a lot of kids that are in high school because they need those volunteer hours, and this will count for them. Um, I did have feedback that a lot of them are going to be showing up. I got asked if there's a limit, and I said, we've never had too many, so bring them. Um, I'm really hoping for a bunch of kids, high school kids, to come and clean up, and of course, everybody here is welcome to come as well.
Thank you, Jim. Um, to add to planning, just to give you all of the heads up, I'm on the Planning Commission for the county. Um, we have, uh, made strides in our last planning commission, which, which ties into the City of Huntsville, too. Uh, Planning Commission, I, I visited with the Planning, uh, Commission, our Planning Commission the other day, uh, last Wednesday, actually, in regards to, um, some changes that's coming from the county. As you all know, this, this legislative session, they took away our, um, our, uh, planning growth area, uh, regarding the city, that mile radius that goes around the city. Uh, the county's planning on giving that back to us. Now, what does that look like? We don't know as of yet, but we, basically, the, the Planning Commission in general has said, Planning Commission for the county in general has said, hey, uh, if it's in that one mile growth area around the city, uh, we want the city to handle that, so there'll still be inspection process that goes along with that. Uh, we'll, we'll still have a permitting process. It'll go before our planning board, and then once it's approved by our planning board, it'll be sent up to the county for their approval. So, it's going to be a little bit, a little bit more of a, of a, of a process, but, I mean, like, maybe an extra week or something added to that, but it's going to be good for us to, um, uh, get that growth area back around the city. It's imperative that we get that growth area back around the city. So, the county has, uh, has been gracious enough to do that, and we really appreciate that on the, on the planning side of things. So, you've been included, Building Inspector Report, Code Enforcement Officer, did we get that in the package?
Um, it, it, they're in the packet.
There's something in there. Yeah, okay, all right. He, he basically gave an overview of that, uh, and then Animal Control Office, that's going to be, to be continued until we kind of get that lined out, and Joshua and I will have that conversation tomorrow, so.
But there's numbers on it.
Yeah, but there are numbers on the report, yes. All right, uh, Commission and Committee Reports emailed with the Agenda Packet, Water and Sewer was August the 21st.
Planning Commission was August 25th. We have no unfinished business. Uh, so, on to new ordinance, or new businesses. Ordinance 2025-7 amending Title 8 of the vehicle and traffic codes of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas. And, uh, Mr. Smallman, this one's, this one's particular. Yours, you're more than welcome. Before we read this, do you want to come up and say anything?
No.
No, no, just, just the troubles that you've had, kind of give us a history of what we've been dealing with up there. Yeah.
What, what, what brought all this, this thing on?
Yeah.
What brought all this on was, and I talked to you about it, is I was having a delivery made, and the truck was excessively large, and it couldn't get down the street, and I couldn't get my item until, you know, a week later, and I had to reschedule the delivery.
Well, I can't, I can't, if that truck can't get down that street, and this is a problem every day, how's a fire truck going to get down the street?
Absolutely.
How are these big, wide ambulances going to get down the street? And that's why I brought it to your attention, basically. It wasn't my issue. I mean, I can deal with my own issue.
Sure.
But the issue of other people on the street, I have elderly people on my street.
Absolutely.
The ambulance comes down here quite a few times, you know, a year. I don't know how they're going to do it at night. I mean, the traffic starts, the traffic starts, the problem starts around 4:00, and it goes to a problem at 7:00. Something happens at night, I mean, what does the fire department do, knock on doors and tell people to move?
No.
That, that, that's concerning.
Absolutely.
And I've had to use the ambulance a couple times for myself.
Yes.
That's, that's my biggest concern about the whole
Yeah.
Cars parked on the street. And, and most of them are, here lately, it's been, there's a cluster in the industry, all big trucks and trailers. And there was one in particular that I, I dealt with him once. He, he, he was like talking to the law most of the time.
Yeah.
He didn't want to work with me. So, that's why I brought you into that situation.
Absolutely. Uh, and the thing that we, we have figured out, Mr. Smallman, and Mr. Smallman's also one of our airport commissioners as well, uh, but the one thing that we figured out is, you know, we've got, we've got some rules, and we can go to the International Property Code, uh, or International Maintenance, uh, Property Maintenance Code, uh, and we can look at all these things that we can do, uh, as far as what the law will allow for us, right? And a brief history on this, we had, actually, someone at the city had taken signs up there and put no, no parking signs up there at one point in time, and we found out that we don't have any real ordinance in, in, in association with that, and so we had to remove those signs, and now it's, it's compounded, and it's become a huge issue. Um, we're going to do it the right way for you, Mr. Smallman, and, and the thing that I'll say to you is, is it's unfortunate you didn't get your package, for sure, but moreover, it's very concerning. We've had to have the police department go up, I think, a couple of times, knock on some doors. Uh, if we can't get, if we can't get an ambulance or a fire truck down there, that's the issue. So, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and so for that, uh, we'll, we'll get into the ordinance aspect of it, unless you've got anything else you want to add. Okay? But I, I, and listen, I'm going to tell you, on a personal note, thank you for your patience. You haven't been overbearing, you haven't been obnoxious, you have just told me whenever things have happened, you have sent me evidence via text, uh, hey, look, Travis, this is what we're dealing with and all that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you're willing to engage in this problem. Uh, and so thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long time coming, Chris, but we're finally here, and I think we're going to do it by emergency clause, too. Yeah. Thank you very much, Chris.
Where is this located? Where, where?
It's up behind the pantry, the Mennonite store, uh, uh, right over here off of Parrot Street.
This doesn't just address that.
It doesn't just address that. We have this issue in, in, in several places within town. This, this is the first tangible thing that we've done, uh, as far as the parking on the street and things, and addressing those things, that comes with a hefty fine, and now we can enforce it by law. So, go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, you need a
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Need a motion.
Yes.
I'm going to replace the opposed ordinance on its first reading in full.
Aye, second.
Got a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Jessica, if you would.
We have ordinance number 2025-7, an ordinance amending Title 8 of the vehicles and traffic codes of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas. Whereas the City of Huntsville has recently discovered that certain residential city streets where cars park on both sides of the street and impede the passage of emergency vehicles, the City Council of Huntsville, Arkansas has determined that the code should be amended. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas, Article 1, Section 1, Title 8, Chapter 8.20, parking is hereby amended as follows. Section 2, Section 8.20, uh, .06, street parking in residential areas, the City Public Works Department shall determine which residential street, city streets are too narrow for emergency vehicles to traverse on when cars are parked on both sides of the street. No parking signs may be placed, uh, by City Public Works Department on one side of the street, banning parking from occurring. However, parking may be allowed on the other side of the street as long as it does not impede the passage of emergency vehicles or other large vehicles, and does not block driveways and milk boxes. Section 3, Section 8.20.07, enforcement, the Huntsville City Police Department and Huntsville Code Enforcement Officer are hereby authorized to enforce this ordinance to include towing of vehicles with or without the notice. Uh, if the vehicle is impeding traffic to the point of the emergency, vehicles cannot traverse the street. Section 4, Section 8.20.08, fine. Any person violating any of the terms of this ordinance shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a fine of $100 for the first offense, a fine of $250 for the second offense, and a fine of $500 for the third offense. Responsibility for such violations shall rest with the owner of the vehicle illegally parked regardless of who actually placed the vehicle in the parking area. Article 2, emergency, the adoption of this ordinance is necessary to ensure the passage of the emergency vehicles, including fire trucks and ambulances. Therefore, an emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary to the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. This shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after the passage and approval passed, and approved by the City Council of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas, with the eight days that
Any discussion by City Council?
Mr. Mayor, move the rule requiring the reading of the ordinance in full on three different days be suspended, the ordinance be placed on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Jessica?
Ordinance number 2025-7, an ordinance amending Title 8 of vehicles and traffic codes of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Mr. Mayor, move the rule requiring the reading of the ordinance on three different days be further suspended, and the ordinance be placed on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second by Mr. Ford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Go ahead.
Ordinance number 2025-7, an ordinance amending Title 8 of the vehicles and traffic codes of the City of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve ordinance number 2025-7.
Have a motion, have a second by Mr. Ford. Uh, Carmen, if you would, call roll, please.
Steven Ford.
Yes.
Brad Wallace.
Yes.
Leslie Evans.
Yes.
Crystal Lacy.
Yes.
Scott Thomas.
Yes.
Karen Roden.
Yes.
Patina Coker.
All right, we have our, go ahead.
Okay, I'll let you finish.
No, go ahead.
I was going to move for the, uh, uh, adoption of the emergency clause.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Got a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have an ordinance. We can start writing tickets tomorrow.
But we just get the signs.
Yeah, we did get signed.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you all for that. Been a long time coming. And just FYI, just so you know, we're having some issues with parking on, on South College, too. Uh, we are fixing to, uh, matter of fact, I've got a meeting this week at some point in time, uh, with a group that are coming out to repaint the surface of that street, to take out all the white lines, because it's all parallel parking down there. We're going to turn it all one-side street parking perpendicular, and I think we're going to get about seven or eight more spots out of, out of College Street to where everybody parks on the, uh, would be the, uh, east side of College going down. Uh, it's going to make traffic a little, little easier, uh, down through there, and we've got a lot of infighting going on right now with business owners, uh, that want to park there and, and things of that nature. So, anyway, we're going to address that there on College, uh, and we think we can do that without ordinance. We can do that just by painting the street. So, anyway, anything else to come before us tonight?
All right.
Announcements.
Announcements, correspondence, and comments. Economic Development Commission meeting Tuesday, September the 16th at 7:30, 8:30, uh, at the Bachelor Building. Water and Sewer Commission, Tuesday, September the 18th. Planning Commission, Monday, September the 29th at 6:00 PM. Um, City Council meeting Monday, October the 13th. I can't believe we're already in October, or close to October, the 13th at 6:00.
Better all day.
Reminder of, of, uh, Jennifer's, uh, deal Saturday, the 13th, Citywide Cleanup, College Street Park. What time again, Jennifer?
9:00.
9:00 noon.
9:00 noon.
Yeah, so be there or be square.
Be on the square. Be there.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
That's it. All right.
We are adjourned.